We're on.
Township of Precipity, Troy Hills Township Council Special Meeting, May 5th, 2015. Meeting called to order by myself at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the flag salute. Mr. Stanton, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I'd ask if we'd all remain standing, a moment of silence for two past chiefs of the rescue and recovery that passed away within the last week, Steve Mundt and Jim Stefel. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Carrifi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Others present, Mayor Barberio, L&amp;M Sandman, Business Administrator, Yancey Wazermas, Township Clerk, Ann Cucci, CFO. The agenda of this meeting, to the extent known, is as follows: Review and discussion of the mayor's 2015 budget recommendations; formal action may or may not be taken.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting a meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on April 16, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. Copies of this notice appeared in the Daily Record on April 20, 2015, and were found to the Star Ledger and various other newspapers and local radio stations on April 17, 2015.
Before we get going with the agenda, just asking, merit raises? If we could...
As I was gonna say. Just give it a second.
You got a topic?
No, not yet.
Yeah, as I was gonna say, housekeeping? Yes, we do. Okay. Ann has them, and again, we put privilege and confidential on it. Now, these are merit raises. When we get into the next, there's gonna be, there's promotions, there's other things that we will discuss. But you had asked for merit. The only other thing that you're gonna get this evening is, because of the nature and the hope for, let's say, some movement going forward, we're gonna give out, Ann's gonna give you out Phase 1, so that it dovetails into the dialogue that you're gonna wanna have in either the 14th, or the council president and I have talked about. If we're not able to get it all done on the 14th, that there may be, you know, a special final meeting to finalize all the numbers. But now, we're gonna pass out the information as it relates to just with regard to the ambulance service, you know, and the comparison of the work that was done. Ann, did you give that out as well? Okay. So, again, that documentation is now, just shows you what the numbers are and what he was making a comparison. That's something you asked for, that's something that you'll be reviewing going forward, but we wanted to make sure that you had it. And we feel that in orderly fashion is to give it out at a meeting, so that we know everybody gets it, didn't get in the email, so that's the reason why you're receiving it this evening. Yes?
These are restructures, these are not merits, right? For the ambulance services?
Yes, they are not merit, but the reason why they're restructuring. However, because of the significance of the increase and the weight of the decision-making that the mayor and council have to do with regard to this particular aspect of the budget, we felt it was imperative to give you this information at this point, so you have time to digest what they're, you know, trying to do. This is a restructuring. The others are the merit ones, okay?
Thank you.
Ellen, I got a question too. Council President, can I ask a question? Ellen, under, if you go back into your manual here, under revenue summary, I was reviewing the information that you provide in here, you know, you went to great detail. I'm just concerned with, on the revenue summary, you have 2014 for the sewer surplus, you have $155,000. That's what we took from it to balance our budget. And now, we're at $1.2 million.
Right. I can answer it, and so...
Okay, so I just, so the question I have is, we have...
That, what, yeah, if you looked at, wait one second, and then I'll have Ann answer. One of the things with regard to that is, if you looked in the history, what we did was, we took a review back and felt that, over the years, there have been opportunities to help balance a budget and also make sure that the people that are living in the community, the surplus is in very good shape. We believe we will be re-establishing it, and felt that this was, we had a very good comfort level with this number. You'll see in past budgets, which we can have a document, Ann's preparing a document over the, you know, the last 10 years of, you know, what was utilized in surplus and what was built back. We're very proud of the things that are taking place at the sewer, not the least of which is the fog operation, which will bring quite a bit of surplus into the...
Okay, I understand that, and I truly have a lot of questions about the sewer in itself.
Okay, and that would be best served on the 14th?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay? But if you want to, if you want to ask those questions, so that we don't take any more time from Greg and DPW and Engineering, if you want to ask those questions, not tonight, but like tomorrow, or get them to, and we can answer them in detail prior, and get Paula involved prior, and the utility people prior to the meeting on the 14th.
Okay, let me just finish with my point, though.
Absolutely.
You know, it's $1.2 million. I'm just concerned about that, because I know that when we were balancing our budget with the mayor last year, that was always concerned his too, when we took the 155, and we were obviously still over, and we had to raise taxes a small bit to still maintain the services.
If the mayor would like to address that now? I know we've talked about this, we talked about this at length.
Okay, because...
I would not, that would not have been done without working with the mayor and...
Okay, all right, let me just, let me just finish up what I'm gonna say here. So, I'm concerned about the 1.2 million, to be quite frank, because I thought we were only over our budget of about $800,000 that we had to cut down. So, really, we went $2 million over what we really needed.
Any number can be made up any way, and expressed any way you wish. This is an equitable and fair way of getting back to the people that are living in the community at this particular point, and paying their sewer bills and paying their taxes, and equitable. But I would turn it over to the mayor, mayor?
Just let me just finish my breath here.
Sure. Okay, go ahead.
The money, how it's distributed, it's paying salaries, and the question I have is, by law, how much are we allowed to take from the sewer surplus? Is it only 5%?
No, that's, I'll answer that. That's only for any kind of municipality, well, a utility that's under BPU regulations, and our particular utilities are not.
So, in a sense, we could take $5 million from this money?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so the council wasn't aware of that, 'cause I don't think most of the people here thought you had to go within 5%.
No, no, that's for anything with the BPU and any kind of authority, municipal authority, that's dedicated strictly to that municipality, it's a 5% rule.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the other question I have for you is, when you're looking at this on face value, we know what our goals and objectives were last year at $155,000. Now, we're inflating it by a million dollars.
Well, quite frankly...
Because, my point is, that surplus, if anything, that should be money going back to the taxpayers.
Well, it is, that's the point. But let me just say, because we're giving it back by not raising their taxes, but let me say this.
I know.
Can I just finish? I'm sorry, excuse me. For many years, it was $700,000. Last year, for some strange reason, it was $155,000. So, we felt that 1.2 was both combining and making it whole. The other thing I just wanna say about revenue is, we're not done with the appropriation side yet, and I was thinking, we haven't finalized anything with revenue. So, I'll just say that as well.
But here's my point, and I don't want you to take it wrong. Maybe the Finance Committee should've met many times prior to this, and I know you're a new staff, and this is not to be demeaning to the mayor, when we worked with him last year, we came in with a good budget, and it was $155,000, and I know that he cringed back then, us going even taking that 155.
I never cringed. It was the control, it was the controller who cringed, and I didn't, and that was Joe Kofatzig at the time. I would've taken more. I have, I've never had an issue with using the sewer surplus. I used it back in 2011, I used it in 2012, and I would continue to use it, 'cause it's like, our controller said, that you are giving it back to the taxpayers.
I, well, we'll have to debate that in great detail.
I think...
How we're just gonna tax payers.
Well, it is, by reducing the property tax based on using that revenue. I think we should review this after we go through the appropriation. I'm just suggesting that...
I just wanna put on the record...
No, I agree.
We have to go in great detail, 'cause we still have to settle contracts.
Yes, absolutely agree.
And there's so much, any other things to take into consideration, and I know that we wanna be fair to the other employees.
Sure, and this is...
And, I mean, our goal and vision moving forward, we're gonna keep taking from the sewer surplus?
No, I don't, I don't know. I mean, this is something we have to look at.
How much is in the sewer surplus right now?
About $11 million.
Okay, so, couldn't that $11 million go back to the taxpayers?
And it did, part of it did, but, well, no, I mean, we would like, there's goals, the goals of the sewer we should discuss, but some of it, I mean, you have to look at your debt, you need to look at paying off, we have a lot of goals here, and we're looking at little tiny pieces, I believe...
I see some of that revenue that's paying off the knoll for issues up there, based on how it was broken down.
No, this nothing has anything to do with the knoll, with the surplus.
No salaries, paying for salaries up at the knoll, out of that 1.2?
No, absolutely not.
Okay.
That's against the law. Yeah, no.
All right, so we'll have to go in detail about 1.2.
Absolutely, and, you know, I welcome the Finance Committee meeting to discuss this at any time, or even tomorrow or the next day.
I just wish, going forward, from the very beginning, when you guys came on board, and I came in here many times, concerned about other contracts and other folks being fair to, no one ever mentioned that we're gonna be taking from the surplus. So, I'm just putting that on the record, so that's gonna be my...
I think one of the things is, you're connecting something that shouldn't be connected at all. You're saying salary and wages and surplus, very different things. When we did first meet, I said we always had to be very cautious about the fact that a budget has two sides, a revenue side...
Yes.
And an operating side. So, I think, in light of the fact that we are here to talk about DPW, believe me, there's a lot of things I'd like to express with you, and have had, Ann has been in the utility side, and we've done very well in that field. I have worked in utilities with my administration and with the operating budget, and we find a happy meeting, what's fair, so...
Okay, just real quickly, right off the top, so the folks at the back there now, what are the top three payments from the sewer surplus? Where's it going to, in the town? The top three items?
Well, we have, we'll be talking... If, your question is, what are, what does some of the sewer pay for? You know, it pays for the entire sewer operation, and then, as you know...
Well, I'm talking about 1.2 million that we're using from there, where is it exactly going to?
What is it covering?
Goes into the general fund.
It paid, it's the revenue side, it's not, it doesn't, it's not paying, I mean, we've paid off that service, we've... They're trying to equate that that's going directly to something, it's the revenue side, it's a revenue dollar, and it's balancing out the operating budget. Okay, there needs to be a lot more discussion, because I think we're, there's a miss in the synapse here, and we gotta get...
Well, yeah, because again, we met with the mayor last year, that was a bone of contention, so we're going from 155, $155,000 to 1.22.
It was never my bone of contention.
In fact, I think, mayor, we're using...
The controller at the time, when we had...
Who pled to us that we shouldn't even be taking it from there. That's my point. He pled with us that we shouldn't be taking from there.
He could've balanced the budget last year, if that was the case, because he had indicated to us that we should not be taking from sewer surplus.
And again, I'm here now, Ann's here now, and I'm just saying that it's an equity thing to do. The reason why we did a million two is, we said, basically, when we looked back, we saw that over the years, there was $700,000 taken, so we said 700 for this year, and a 700, I mean, it's a little less, so we took only a million two. So, we said only 500 from something, 'cause they took 100 and plus thousand dollars, which, again, the mayor, when I first came here, said that he was, he was looking at a $5 million allotment from the sewer, as much as that you would be, if it was something...
No, I said, we gotta keep the surplus, you'd have to keep the surplus at a certain level.
Was that the $5 million number?
It would be five, five or six million.
Yeah, but what we're saying here now is, we're being so aggressively seeking other opportunities at the sewer plant, and doing well with bringing in other folks to utilize our sewer utility, as well as the fog operation, which we've already taken in close to $200,000. So, you know, we're definitely being very conservative, because we will never, we do say for a rainy day, but there is a balancing act, but it needs to be discussed in this forum, I don't think it's gonna do it.
I mean, this is not for any political gain, the media's not here, I mean, we have to be transparent, because we weren't transparent when we transferred money to pay for attorney fees, I don't wanna keep going on with that, but there's gotta be a...
Then, why did you just say it, sir? Why did you just bring it up, then, sir?
Well, I am bringing it up, because we're going, the whole time out, we're going from $155,000 to 1.2 million dollars.
It's time for another, another time.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about. All right, you wanna move on?
Okay, we'll have Department of Public Works, Mr. Snyder.
Good evening, everybody, how are you?
Good evening.
Okay, I guess.
Okay, first division number will be 370.
That will be the Road Division.
Streets and Roads.
Okay, we'll make sure that Greg uses the thing. One of the things, I asked Greg just to start, even though it's really under sanitation, we're gonna do, again, showing how, going forward, we try to improve upon finding funds and making the budget better by this. So, Greg, Greg and, and as I said, Jimmy Walsh, talked about this, we have legislation that we're hoping to put on the meeting of the 12th, but I thought you could talk a little bit about what kind of savings you think it could possibly garner.
Can you hear me? This ordinance is in reference to a significant cost that I have in the sanitation division, and that is the disposal of yard waste. I'm getting somewhat stuck in the middle of very few companies doing this business and taking the yard waste away, therefore, I'm trapped when I go out to bid, and there's just one or two competitive bids that come in. So, as you can imagine, if they get together and talk it out, I'm somewhat, you know what. So, the object of this ordinance is to, hopefully, and this will require DEP permits and so forth, so it's not something that we will start, you know, in June of this year, is that we will be able to start our own mulching and yard waste recycling business within the township. Currently, we are expending probably somewhere in the vicinity of $300,000 to $400,000 a year to transport this material out of the township. Initial estimates, and these are only initial, is that we could possibly, the first year that we're, we open up, it's a terrible way to put it, open up for business, but we could possibly have a savings of $75,000 to $100,000. Now, this material needs to, you know, compost itself, and sometimes it takes a few years to really get to the material to be right. So, I'm looking at that number going up as we go down the road. But if there's anything that we can save of that $300,000 and $400,000, we're certainly on the road to recovery a little bit. I envision, if this becomes, you know, a very viable way to dispose of the material, you know, a quarter of a million dollars is nothing, we could get rid of it without having to ship it. Every trailer that goes out of this township to the company that won the bid, every trailer that goes out costs me $1,100 to ship the material out. So, it's, it's something that's, you know, on the bucket list that I have right now is probably in the top two or three things to do. I'd like to, you know, leave here with the, you know, knowing that we've made some definite strides in the direction of saving money. And you've probably heard that recycling, the recycling business is nowhere near what it used to be, so our revenue is down considerably. But to offset that somewhat, if we can save 200,000 or 150,000, or 100,000 the first year, was certainly a step in the right direction. That's what the intent of this ordinance is. Will it come to fruition the first two months of the year, after we approve it? No, it won't probably start taking effect until sometime next year after DEP gives us approval and so forth, and Justin and I will review that for sure. And number one is a location for it. We would need a place to store the material, and it's, there's a lot of variables here that we have to look at, but I think we can do it, and, you know, that's the intent of this ordinance, just to get it started and so forth and so on.
Page one? Okay, division number 370. Questions?
Right to the operating budget, this is the, on page one of one. Division of Streets and Roads. The only thing I can say is, I've kept the budget in both divisions, and you'll see that they're very close, if not lower. The reason the Road Division budget is higher is, as you can see down near the bottom, condominium payments, which I do not get involved in, there were none made, or a very small amount made in 2014, as of the end of the year, so if you can see why my budget is 350, the same as it was the prior year, but there's very few expenditures out of that account. If you take that difference out, you'll see I'm pretty close to where I was last year on the budget.
I know, this past year, we had a pretty bad winter.
We certainly did.
And it says, we spent 518 on line item four, object code 438, for the snow removal.
That's correct, right.
518,723. You requested 571, but the budget is for 620,000, which is more than 100,000 over.
Yeah, Mr. President, the last two years have caught us by surprise, really. I mean, we were doing 400,000 or 450 there for, up until about two years ago. I'm looking into a possibility of storing more salt, which will require more monies to buy additional salt, because we have had a terrible time with the vendors on deliveries of salt. So, and, you know, the intent there is to really build it up a little bit, and also create somewhat of a snow surplus, and we've discussed this, and I'll even let Ann...
I'm getting popped in the shoulders.
Greg, I understand that there are a number of towns that ran out of salt and couldn't replenish their supplies. So, what you wanna do is to stock up now, when you can get it?
It was, that's two years in a row that I've had a difficult time with salt, and we're under the Morse County Co-op, and I'm basically told to use that one. I was begging other townships for, you know, it was just a terrible year for salt, terrible. But we survived, and I can happily tell you that after the winter went away and it became 55 degrees, the deliveries started to come in. So, I'm building up now for two at the end of this year, but I need more, I need another, you know, stockpiling situation here.
Greg, did we run out of salt?
We were so close, I would say if there was a case of us running out, it was maybe two or three days, and we were honing in on just intersections, hills, and so forth and so on. I was forced into, and I'm allowed to do it, under, you know, emergency situations, thanks, Mayor, to use grit, and I was using grit, if you probably noticed, there's some on the road, yeah. We were using the salt sparingly on main roads, intersections, hilly roads, and the side roads were basically getting the grit.
Also, if I may add, one of the reasons is the fact that once it hits 18 degrees or below, the salt doesn't even work anymore, so when you mix it, that's another reason why, so at least you can have some traction.
And this is the first year we actually experienced below zero temperatures in February, so, I mean, it was a battle from the beginning of November right to the end of April, so, but, any consolation, we're in pretty good shape right now with salt, so...
Get off on a different subject, real quick, with the grit and stuff that you had to use. Are the, is the street sweeper out and about?
Working now, quite diligently. I have one that just broke, it'll be back tomorrow. I'm trying to do, again, the main drags to keep them clean right off the bat, I'm getting a lot of calls and trying to surface those calls as they come in, working on those streets, but we're out there doing it, and, yeah, it was, it's been a lot of work. Lot of buildup.
Okay, any other questions on 370? Okay, moving on, any questions on condominium payments, 371?
Well, I just assume that those payments, those bills didn't come in yet, right? Haven't been paid yet, okay.
Is there an anticipated timeframe when they're gonna bill us?
I don't have that.
That's correct. The bills, it usually runs very late, anyway.
So, that money's encumbered, and whenever the bills come in, you'll pay them?
They have to be reviewed, and by the time they come, the association's then, it's late, and we have to make sure that they're correct.
Okay, any questions on division number 390?
Quick question, just looking at the hire date for a lot of the laborers and some of the blue collar workers, I guess you're having trouble keeping some people? I mean, if you look at the dates of hire, 2012, 13, 14, it's like a whole shift of newcomers.
It's not the easiest job in the world, and there are, you know, there are a lot of desperate people out there who have come in to my office, sat down, said, "Mr. Snyder, I need a job, I have a family to support, Precipity resident." They just can't do it. And they last a week, and they just can't do it.
Yeah, I'm looking at the 2015s, 14s, 13s.
Yeah, it's a, it's a swinging door, to be honest with it, really is. And unfortunately, sometimes, just to elaborate on that a little bit, and not being prepared to do that type of job, I end up with a lot of injuries, which end up as a lot of workers' comp. So, I'm relying on my 90-day window now on a probationary to really keep an eye on everybody that comes in, and if somebody looks like it's just not gonna cut it, you know, I can't be the good guy and say, "I'll let you stay for another, you know, year or so," because they're not gonna make it, they're not gonna make it.
I think one of the other things is, and we're trying to adjust that too, with regard to negotiating with the blue collar workers, is that the salary, and then when the benefit packages were reduced, I mean, a lot of folks did come also for knowing that they, the salary wasn't, you know, that desirable, but the fact that they were getting their benefits, and now with the premiums of, you know, going upwards of 35%, it really has, you know, done a toll, so, we are working on that, and we are keeping our eye on the prize with, which I know is the concern of the mayor and the council. So, Greg has a tough job.
You got guys with 15-year separation, and it's, I mean, realistically, pennies.
And a lot of them do have second jobs, yeah, a lot of them do have second jobs.
Just out of curiosity, object code 2001, what is advertising? What was that needed for?
Why it's not there, we used to advertise in the paper for the leaf bags and so forth, but we, we've used the calendar now to do it, we've used, the internet has changed everything. We used to spend money in that account, so we, again, very small amount, I just leave it in there, if we put something in there for a piece of equipment that we might wanna sell that's still viable, or something like that, but, that's the only time I use that account, so...
Is the internet the reason why the postage 508 was down a little bit?
No, the, I pay, just like every other division, so much of the postage expenses for the year, and from what I've been told, Mr. Hardy had a lot of surplus in, this is what I've been told, where he was, he usually takes a considerable amount of my postage out for legal notices and so forth and so on, but that's why that's down. Again, will that happen next year? I don't know, but that's why it's basically left the same way, so...
Greg, on page 5 of 5, I see Clean Communities, was that a grant that we had in the past?
That is a grant that we are, we... That is a grant that we are, we receive every year from the state of New Jersey. And I can happily tell you that I just today received information on the 2014 grant and 2014, 2015, and we are now the number one town in Parsippany, 111,000 dollars we're getting this year. So we put it to good use. I know there's a lot of people, some maybe behind me right now, always questioning what Clean Community money goes for. Basically, it goes for hiring college kids for the summertime. I can go anywhere from 15 to 20 kids. They do a lot, they do a tremendous job for me. I don't have them for very long. I only, if they're college kids, I have them a little longer, but if they're, you know, kids out of high school, I only have them for four to six weeks. We break them up to teams and put them all over the town. They do a phenomenal job for me, they really do. We can buy equipment that we need for cleaning the town up. We can use that money in many ways. And if anybody should be interested, please call me in the office. I have a Clean Community program update that shows what I can use the money for.
Is that 111,000 guaranteed at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Will that be added back into the budget?
It will be put on here, correct.
It will be put on.
We also do a lot of stuff with the schools. We hire outside performers to come in and do clean community stuff. We do a myriad of things with that money, so. But it's pretty nice to, salary is a big help to me, so. I will interject one thing here and I'll go right to the tipping fees. If you'll notice, they are up substantially and I'll, I'm sure you'll pick it up, but I just want to bring this to your attention. You probably aware of, I'm now doing many more apartment complexes in this town. We are now start, we've started the front loader up. The tipping fee number, I'm sorry, is on two of two. Second page of the operating summary.
Right.
I went out and, this is interesting, I basically went out and figured out, taking an average of every garden apartment, how much garbage actually fits into a dumpster. And tried to figure out exactly how much tonnage I was going to generate after adding all these additional apartment complexes to, i.e. Noel Gardens is now onboard with us. And my best estimate is that our solid waste numbers will go up about 150, $150,000. Now, that's still lower than our worst years. We've, you know, we've cut everything back substantially. Recycling program, thank God for the recycling program. Even though the money's not there, understand that by taking the recycling out of the solid waste stream, we save a tremendous amount of money on solid waste.
Greg, these apartments were picking up. Do they have separate bins for recycling?
Part of the deal with the new apartments was that they would pay for those front loader bins. You'll now see that we have the fork truck that goes in and picks them up.
I know, but I'm talking about recycling. I'm talking about do they separate?
Yes, they do, and they are strictly being watched, I can assure you, because if I go to a recycling center and that container is contaminated, I'll be flagged. They'll turn that truck right around.
Okay.
So my enforcement officer watches them carefully. And I have to tell you, the biggest complex in town, Noel Gardens, has been a, it's just phenomenal. I mean, they have guys in that dumpster every day, cleaning out what's not supposed to be in there. They have, you know, played along with, and they're brand new to us. We never picked them up before. So they've done a phenomenal job in Noel Gardens, so. But that's why that number's higher. And, you know, I'd like to, as I sit here right now, tell you that number's going to be under, because that's my goal every year, is to make the, you know, the tipping fee.
That should be offset on the revenue side, though.
Okay, moving on to Capital, 525.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I missed what you said there.
Uh, Capital, 525?
Yep.
Council President, do you want to do Capital now or do you want to do Engineering and then go with Capital on both of them? Or would you just stay with the?
Sure, we can, we can do that.
Do you have anything in Capital, Engineering? You do?
Yeah, they're both in there, yes. Right.
I have nothing, if you want to get rid of me.
Well, well, if he's, yeah, I mean, if, does anybody have any other questions, Mr. Schneider?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have that on our, open up the public. Okay. Okay, before we move on, make a motion to, entertain a motion to open up the public on Department of Public Works, public hearing on that?
Motion.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, if any members of the public, you'll be given three minutes. Please state your name and address.
If you throw eggs at us, we're going to...
Runesmer, 10 Drummond Drive. I knew it. You know, there you go. A couple of quick things. Brian, I want to thank you for bringing that out, because I think it's despicable that this town pays about 20% less than the surrounding towns for the starting men and women, for the department that he has to supervise.
I think you're being nice with 20%.
Well, I know that. I know. Thank you, Brian. Thank you. It's ridiculous. And there are things that I have spoken to Greg about over the years, everybody knows what I do in this town. I picked up three plastic bags of garbage along 202 this morning. That's why I wore the shirt, and it smells, so I'm sorry. But, but it, but something's got to be done. And we'll be addressing that sewer surplus when it's open to the public. Next thing, you talk about the lawn waste, what about, you ever give an idea of the Sharky's landfill? Because I have information how we could use that as an organic, yeah, I have like three minutes, so let me, plug me up. The yellow tag, we all know the yellow tag that the, whether it's Greg, the other Greg, Paddock, Havik, or the garbage men, you know, when they see a TV at the corner. But we've got, I wrote this up to Ellen a couple of months ago, maybe we're not out of the forms yet, but on the town, there's no date, there's no address, there's no name. And if you remember, Council President, those boards that were across from your house, how long it took to pick up, and then after winter, I found that yellow, it was orange, orange card, right? I found that on the street. The other thing, when Greg or the mayor, Ellen, negotiates this one-step recycling, something's got to be done with the cardboard, because there are so few people that put the cardboard out on Wednesdays. They're putting it in the regular garbage. We're losing a ton of money. I know that recycling fee has come, I mean, the reimbursement has come down a lot, from about 169 to $25, but still, it's $25 for us. That's it? Do you want to address that, Sharky?
Yeah, we've, we've looked into Sharky's many times. We wanted to do our street sweeping, so we take up, we have to pay to get rid of them, take them up to Sussex County. DEP is very touchy on anything that we do in that facility. And, you know, there's space down there, there's a lot of space. They're not dumping there, there's a lot of open ground and so forth. But we made a gallant attempt to, you know, get some space in there for, just to put it up as additional cover on some of the piles and so forth and so on, but they wouldn't let us do it. There are other, hopefully we'll find other places in town that we can do this, this operation that we're proposing for the next meeting. But Sharky's dump, it could be a touch-and-go situation with them, they're just very touching
Pepitacho 182 Hawkins Avenue. Greg, I really have nothing to say about your department, other than it's did a fine job during the winter, does great summer jobs. The one thing I will talk about, because you did mention it at this point, was the 1.2 million sewer that you're using?
But that, that's not in reference to this, this department.
Oh, but it's from that department, so you can't, you know, it's from his department, isn't it?
No, no, no. No, that's from...
Oh, he's just, is that separate from your?
Right, right.
Well, you see, you're good then, because that, that explains it to me. That's why Roy told me to wait on the question, I couldn't figure out why. I didn't have a way to...
Right.
Okay.
So you were saving that question?
Not everybody knows.
You only get two and a half minutes next time, now. You have a following, they love you.
All right, seeing no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to the Engineering Division, 410.
We have the A-Team here.
Yeah, as you can see, there's not a lot of change in the proposed budget for 2015 compared to last year. Many of the items stayed the same. Probably the biggest change was in consulting, which was dropped by about $5,000. And that's really, we're looking to hire a consultant to help us with closing out a lot of the FEMA grants that we're working on. We're in the process of getting RFPs now. We had a grant administrator working with us that was a shared service. She had left her position in Little Falls and took another position where she can't help us anymore. So we're looking to get someone in now just to close out a lot of this FEMA work. And that's really what that consultant line is. Being that we're, you know, partially through the year already, haven't hired anyone, that's a reason for that reduction from the 30,000.
In fact, one of the people that they're looking at is someone from the county who also worked as a state trooper, so has a lot of connections to help us navigate the, getting the funding in. So that's, I know, that's who you're pursuing. Talking about a significant amount of money, in addition to the 2.5, $500,000 that we have received, I know there's more money, another, at least another 2 point something million.
Yeah, there's about another $2 million still to be reimbursed.
Justin, when it comes to the consultants, can you explain to me how that money is utilized? What specific projects that's been earmarked for?
Well, the line item here for a consultant is solely for the FEMA grant, hiring someone to come in and help us do the grant administration. This is not consultants that would do road designs for us or drainage work or anything like that. This is solely for that FEMA grant.
How much do we usually bring in the FEMA grant, as far as funding over the last couple of years, and what do you anticipate?
We don't, it's a reimbursement of grant, so we don't get a certain amount of money that we get to use it. We had, it was a $7.2 million grant that we received.
Correct.
We have to expend money and then file for reimbursements to get that money back.
Have we received all the reimbursements to date?
We've received about 2.7 million so far. But we still have about $2 million that's still out there that has to be finalized, submitted and reimbursed.
When I mention grants, I'm specifically referencing the detanglement of the Rockaway River. We'll get to that in the budget items, the line items, but is there grant money available out there for the maintenance of the Rockaway River?
There are some grants that are out there besides the one that we did receive. A lot of them are federal grants, though. A lot, the state grants that we had looked into, the problem with them is a lot of them are earmarked for sandy type of recovery work.
Sediment?
And they're very competitive.
Okay.
So it's tough to get our handle, our hands on that kind of money, but we are pursuing and looking into any grant that we can get.
I heard the young lady next to you is very good at grant writing.
Yes, and I will tell you this, one of the things that's, we are successful, and in fact, not only successful, but Justin is the lead on a grant of four municipalities, if you want to just address that a little bit. So, see, this is an opportunity for, there's so many moving parts that it's not just, the budget is not, it's fluid. So if you could just talk to, you know, what's going to be happening with that, what are the towns that are involved and what kind of dollars are we talking about, you know, with that, so.
The DEP put out a competitive grant for de-snagging and de-silting of rivers and streams in the Saig River Basin. We actually are part of two grants. The big one is for the Lower Rockaway, which we're involved with Booton, Monville and East Hanover. Parsippany is the lead on that and we received $300,000, which is actually the highest amount, highest award given out for that. There are a couple of towns that did receive that, or when I say towns, I should say sections that share that. We are also in the Whippany River grant, which received about $168,000. Hanover's the lead on that and there's, there's about six towns that are included in that cleanup. And what we're doing is we, we've walked the river several times, identified where the snags are. There's just not enough money to do de-silting. We really are just concentrating on snags, fallen trees, branches, anything that's slowing down the flow of the water. The, just for the Lower Rockaway, to give you an idea on the magnitude, we estimated about $600,000 worth of work, just to take the organic debris out. The grant only covers 300,000. I have asked, when we get to Capital, to see that there is some money in there to help bolster that a little bit, so we can do a little bit more with the cleanup. But it is something where, you know, we're going to do as much as we possibly can. Obviously, it's going to be a competitive bid, so we're going to be sort of at the mercy of what the bid price is coming at. But I think we can do a substantial amount of cleanup in the river and getting the de-snags out where it'll help the flow.
That 300,000 is just for Parsippany?
It's for the Lower Rockaway, which is being shared with Booton, Monville.
Being shared, okay.
Well, in, the way they do it is, it's for the Lower Rockaway. Now, there's four towns that are involved because of the boundaries on the Rockaway. But it's not being split up, say, equally, or, we're the lead agency, we're going to put a bid package out, we control the funds. And what we're doing is just selecting the areas on the Rockaway where we're going to get the biggest bang for the buck, the biggest issues of the snags and remove those.
So those communities are not receiving any additional funding that we can share?
No.
Okay.
But it's because we went as an entity together. The state always likes to have more than one.
Yes.
But as Justin said, which is very important to note, one, they don't just make you the lead agency because they feel like making you the lead agency. It shows that we have a very good working relationship with the state funding as it refers to the Rockaway and the Whippany and regarding that. And secondly, these other towns are highly dedicated to working together, because de-snagging in one area is going to only help the other area. So what is also significant is because we went as an entity together and made our case that we did receive the largest amount of money that they've given in a very long time. So that was very good.
What was the progress made since last year? Because I know I was an advocate and I asked you about the de-snagging of the Rockaway River to prevent future flooding, and we also talked about dredging as well. What was the outcome of that conversation over the year? What have you accomplished?
We did hire a consult, I'm sorry, not a consult, a contractor to go in there and start removing some of the snags in the river with our... and start removing some of the snags in the river with our own funds. The grant money was awarded to us last year, but there's a long process that we have to go through with DEP to get the approvals before we can take that money and utilize that.
We don't lose those funds, right?
We don't lose it. And matter of fact, we should be going out to bid, probably in the next month, month and a half, is the goal, to get that out to bid in a short time period.
What was last year's grant?
That was just a single grant. It's not a yearly grant. The state had extra funds. I don't recall what the total amount was. And then they divvied it up into this Passaic River Basin, and that's how...it was competitive where you had to apply with a letter and prove your case with need.
So in the Lower Lake Hiawatha right now, how many feet do you think the $300,000 is going to extend for us? Do you think we're going to get 300 feet of cleanup? I mean, 300...
We're going to go from the dam to the Passaic River and take the worst-case blockages out. Matter of fact, I'll be meeting next week with another representative from East Hanover, where we're going to go out and re-mark them. We did this last year, but some of the debris has moved and shifted, so we want to get a better handle for the bid as far as where the worst blockages are, identify them and put those in. But we're going to tackle the worst ones now. We know some areas have some blockages, but they're very accessible, so we won't do those under the grant. We're going to try to take care of that with in-house forces or get another contractor in just to remove some of that stuff.
When you say in-house forces, what department is that?
The Road Department has helped...
Hey Greg.
Partner in crime.
And the guy's been great helping out wherever they need to.
Hey Justin, how long does it take for this whole process to finally get to where it needs to be? Because you're saying it's about $300,000, it might extend up to almost $600,000, right? You're saying?
Well, yeah, we're estimating about $600,000 to do the full cleanup.
So is this by the summer, end of the summer? Does this project...
Well, the bid portion, which will be about $300,000, we're aiming for by late summer to have it completed. They think within about a month time period, they should be able to get in, do what they need to do, get the blockages cleared, and get out of the river.
What's the big expense involved? Is it hauling it away, or equipment has to go in there?
A lot of it is access. DEP does not want us to cut a lot of paths into the river.
Okay.
So we have to identify access points. And then the machinery has to stay in the river as much as possible, which there's specialized equipment that's involved with that, not just any piece can go in and out. And it's odd, because usually DEP wants you out of the river. Now they're saying, no, stay in. We want as little land disturbance as possible. So there's some unique instances where we...
There's protocols that have to go by to be in there.
Yeah, but there's just a lot of debris. There are numerous, numerous trees. Some of them are...the blockages are piled up 20 feet high.
They are, okay.
They're not fully blocking the river, but they're off this side, but when the river level comes up, it impedes the flow. So, you know, there are varying degrees of severity, but it's a huge volume of trees that are down.
Okay.
And one of the things that, when you talk about timing and holdup, was because of the fact that the accessibility, because I did, I guess, over the couple of months, I've asked Justin, where are we? And he said, because of the 26 storms and all the rest, it was difficult to find a safe location, because it was covered over by, you know, the snow itself. So I know that was one of the things. So now that the weather is cooperative, I think you're on the go with that.
That's right.
Thanks.
One quick question. Manor Lake treatment, I'm looking at the money budget request. We've been talking about this at council meetings. Is that a little, I mean, short on what we've been talking about financially?
This is just for the algae treatment of the lake.
Okay, nothing to do with the next...
No, we've actually been doing this...
Thank you, Brian, but that's...he'll tell you.
Yeah, we've been doing this for years, since before I came here. It was always paid out of capital, out of the general drainage construction line item. And Ellen and Ann felt that that really shouldn't be a capital expense. That's something that's an operating expense. Bless you. So that's why we had moved it into the...yeah, and it's just algae treatment.
Just a side question concerning Department of, you know, Public Works. If you're utilizing it for anything on the river or whatever other projects, do they have the proper safety equipment?
We don't put them at risk. They're not cutting trees or doing anything that would be a safety issue beyond what they can normally do. You know, a lot of the stuff, when we get them involved, it's, you know, a backhoe, just reaching in, grabbing a log, dragging it off, and then they'll dispose of it. It's not a high-tech or a very involved process. That stuff we would leave to a specialist. This is more of just your normal cleanup or whatever they can grab.
So I noticed you have money budget for education, but the Department of Public Works has enough safety equipment for the projects that you have for the year, and also they have the education for what they need as well?
Well, that would have to be answered by Greg for his crew. The education that I have here is for myself, my three inspectors, the two other engineers for continued education credits and updates.
Sure, okay. Greg, would you mind just answering that question?
I'm a safety nut. I send the guys, all the supervisors, to many classes as I possibly can. The operation that Justin and I have talked about with the DPW end of it is basically having a backhoe go in there with a long chain. Don't send the men into the water or anything like that. We simply, you know, put a chain around it and pull it right out and chop it up with our machine that we have. That's...there are, believe me, and I tell you this, there are places in there that we can't get to, very difficult. That's where the specialty equipment has to be used. That river winds in places where nobody can see where it goes, believe me. But safety is always number one with me. And the road guys are actually pretty good with that. They follow, you know, if I'm not there, I have supervisors that know what to do. So I feel pretty comfortable that whatever the operation will be, that'll be fine, so...
Thank you, Greg. Of course, the safety and welfare of our employees is a priority.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
I think, Council President, if I could, one of the main areas of his is that's capital.
Yes.
I mean, there's quite a bit to cover. So if, you know, you don't have any more questions on his operating budget, the meat of the Engineering Department is in this, I think it's five...
Five, six, seven.
Five twenty-five, or?
Five twenty-five, seven.
Yeah, division five twenty-five. And if you want to, you know, maybe make a couple of highlighted projects that you've been working on for a while, you know, working toward, and then answer questions.
Okay, one of the newer line items, and you'll notice it's the Rockaway River Stream Cleaning and Flood Improvements. That is E. The request is for initial $100,000, and that's going to be put towards the work with the grant. We have the $300,000. Any more that we can do to get closer to that goal of getting everything out would be beneficial. And the request for that would go directly into that project for the de-snagging.
So if you're saying that you can't de-snag the entire Rockaway River as it appears in Parsippany, with the $300,000 and the $100,000, what would be an...
Will get us closer to that goal.
How many years you think it's going to take to accomplish that? Because we have hurricanes consistently throughout every year.
Well, again, if you walk through the Rockaway, what you're going to see is a variety of different snags.
Right.
Some of them are trees that are down along the edge of the bank with some branches that stick in. So what'll happen during heavy flows, it'll start collecting some debris. Those are low-priority snags. We're going to concentrate on the snags that are falling across the river, significantly impacting even low-flow conditions. And that's the reason for the meeting next week, is to identify the new areas of concern, prioritize them again, so that we know which are the worst-case scenarios. And these areas that are smaller, branches off this side, if we can get to them, and obviously if it's in their path to get to these other snags, we're going to take care of it. If it's things that we can leave for either our in-house crews or another contractor at a later date to do, we'll have them do it. But it's something that we're going to catalog all of it, so that we can get the biggest bang for the buck with this project.
Thank you, Justin. Justin, where is the letter A Drainage Construction Project?
That's not one specific project. That money goes to miscellaneous drainage work that we do throughout the town. For example, we had an issue a few years ago on Cherry Lane, where about eight or nine homes had a drainage problem in their rear yards. It turned out, before the development was built, there was a stream that ran through there. And the yards were always very soft, mucky. Summertime, you can go out there and sink in about an inch of mud. So we use this account to pay for the improvements. We work with the homeowners, had a drainage system put in to help drain the water in a subsurface area and take it out, and that helped improve it. So it's miscellaneous drainage improvements.
Is that the one in Glacier Hills? Is that the one in Glacier Hills?
No, that...this was Cherry Lane that was in Hiawatha, right off of North Beverwick. That was a somewhat large project. We do even some small ones. So it really is an all-encompassing kind of line item for anything drainage-related.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing on the Engineering Division. Engineering Division only. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Pappy Tatcha 182 Hawkins Avenue. Donna mentioned is North Beverwick, $600,000. That's just the surfacing. Is that going to be done before the bank moves in, destroys the curb, or you're going to wait until...
What she's referring to is we've received a grant from the DOT for resurfacing of North Beverwick Road. The limits that we proposed was from Route 46 to Lake Shore Drive. That's much more than what the grant amount was. The grant amount was about $250,000. It's really, you know, closer to like a $600,000 project. But we felt the need was there to do it all at one time and not have it broken up into multiple phases. It is only for resurfacing, minor drainage improvements, handicap ramps. When I say drainage improvements, where the existing catch basins are now, they will stay. We have to put the stormwater compliant heads on, which blocks a lot of the floatables, a lot of debris from getting into the catch basin, so it stays on the curb. That's the reason why a lot of the inlets get blocked now with the leaves, because it doesn't allow it to go in, the storm drains. It's an initiative to try to keep the pipes clean. It's a state mandate, though. So minor drainage improvements, handicap ramps, if there's a sidewalk and there are no handicap ramps or substandard handicap ramps, they will be included and upgraded and striping. So it's somewhat basic in the scope of the project.
It sounds like most of the scope of the project is going around the Bank of America. Excuse me, it does sound like that. And this is stuff they should have been liable for. I would like to make a suggestion that when you do do this, you get in touch with the residents that live on Boal and Hawkins Avenue, because it's going to create massive problems. And I really think this town really doesn't care anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, at this time, we'll be moving on to the Police Department. Division number 240?
They're outside.
Oh, she wanted to go on to it, okay. Ellen?
Ellen?
You had said we were going to discuss the DPW capital as well.
I don't think they were...
There?
Yes.
I'm right here. I know we skipped over that pretty quickly.
Okay. Well, we were going to do it all together, capital.
Do you have...
Does anybody have any questions on...
No.
See, you're back again.
Greg, those are replacement vehicles.
Yeah, I didn't see a problem with it.
No, I didn't. I thought it was minor. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought when we said there's nothing, you meant there's...
There's nothing of a large change in some of the...just re...
Okay.
You're okay?
All right.
He's okay?
We really want to see you perform again.
There we go.
Thank you.
Enjoy your recycling there, the egg container.
Take care.
I'd like to throw it out.
Thanks, Greg.
Have a good night, sir.
Everybody surfing.
Oh, it's fine. Well, now, I just... Can you sit here? Yeah. Okay. No money. Okay. No money. Okay, thank you. No money. Okay. Thank you. Oh, yeah. So, sure. Right here. Chief? Thank you. I guess that's on. Oh, yeah. So, I should... I have another answer. That's it. I never got you. Did I? I'm waiting for you.
As of today, it's 94. Thank you, 94.
And how many is that down from when we hired the seven or eight last time, when we brought it up?
We've lost two that have not yet been replaced. We're in the process of doing backgrounds now.
Council President, if I could, the chief, we were talking about the budget presentation, and he'd like to make a statement with regard to the most serious thing and the most concerned that we've talked at during our finance meeting, and that's the overtime and SROs. And I think he'd like to start out with that, because I think it will have a positive result.
Thank you. As Business Administrator Sam Minn mentioned, a pressing problem that we're all aware of is the overtime that we incurred last year. It was substantial, and there are many reasons that it occurred. Some of them were necessary in order to...well, all of them were necessary, but some of them were necessary to maintain the quality of life that we have here in Parsippany. For example, the fireworks, the summer concert series, these are pretty well-fixed costs that we must deal with. However, there were other issues that were problematic. As an example, we had a dispatcher that was out for an extended period of time, and as a result of that, we incurred over $10,000 in overtime between dispatchers and police officers. The total overtime last year in this area, the area that beyond those other functions that I've spoken of, was $634,543. When you subtract the rather unusual... Some of the things that have contributed, helped with this, are I have chosen not to permit any more than one supervisor... Excuse me. Any more than one supervisor off at a time. That has helped. We have also rearranged our training schedules so as to reduce overtime. Officers are being sent for training on their days off. And frankly, I have to give kudos to Captain Miller, wherever he is, for having implemented these programs so effectively. Given the trend that we're now seeing with the overtime this year as compared to last, I anticipate that our overtime, that is to say operational overtime, I'm not including things like the Fall Festival or the fireworks or anything like that, but operational overtime, I anticipate a decrease of $222,754 approximately, assuming that we continue down the path that we have. And that's very good news. Furthermore, regarding the SROs, we... As you know, we've entered into an agreement with the Board of Education, and they... The Board of Education want continuity and consistency, so they've asked to have the same SRO five days a week. Now, given the constraints of our contract and so on and so forth, this means overtime for those two officers once a week, every week. And this is problematic on several levels. Obviously, it's expensive. But beyond that, it's inequitable for the other officers, because why should two officers get such a substantial amount of overtime? And moreover, and more importantly, during the times when the regular SROs are off, for whatever reason, whether it be an extended illness, vacation, whatever, I want to have some continuity and consistency for the students' sake, so that they know the officers that are filling in for their regular SROs. As a result, what we have done is we have cross-trained, because there is training involved in being an SRO. It's not just something where you take somebody off the street and have them do it. It's a challenging job. And we've chosen people that are very effective with children, and we've actually trained up five additional officers. Two of those officers on each... Four altogether on the day shifts. And we're going to rotate them through on the days that would normally, we would be incurring overtime. And we're going to be using those officers to fill in, as I said, during extended illnesses and/or vacation time. And this seems an appropriate, equitable thing to do, and I think that it will serve the children much better than what we have been doing. So, the bottom line is, we have recognized the problem of overtime and the inequities in the way the SRO program has been administered, and we've taken proactive steps to address these with great success. These calculations may be rough, but I believe that had we continued to administer the SRO program as we did, we would have been incurring approximately $60,000 a year in overtime. We have an agreement with the Board of Education that they will pay $100,000 toward the expenses of our officers. So, we were still $40,000 ahead of the game, but I'd rather have the whole $100,000. But it's not just a question of money. It's a question of equity, and it's a question of delivering the best services we can to our students. And I'm glad that it's working out.
When would that be going into effect?
Yes, we did.
When would that be going into effect?
Immediately.
Okay.
Yes. I hope you've noticed that I do listen and respond to concerns of both the council and the community.
Thank you, Chief.
And that was how I hoped to open tonight's hearing. Now, questions? I'm sure you have some.
I don't have the ordinance with me, but do you know at the top of your head what the ordinance was for the amount of lieutenants, captains, and all that? Do you remember the actual numbers?
The numbers of...
Yeah.
I don't...
I believe sergeant was 18.
I may be incorrect in this, but it's a chief, a deputy chief, three captains, seven lieutenants, 18?
18 lieutenants.
Eight lieutenants.
Eight lieutenants, I think it's 19 sergeants.
You have to share the microphone.
And 19 sergeants, the ordinance?
Chief, getting back to the SRO thing, these other officers that were trained, if they're going into the schools, where are they coming from? Like, if the SRO is off on a Friday, somebody else is going in there on Friday, where's he coming from?
Patrol section, and that's why I've taken...
So, does that create overtime in patrol? If he goes into the school?
It could potentially, depending on scheduling, but if we schedule things properly, that will be minimized. There are instances where it would be unavoidable and unforeseeable, absences due to illness and whatnot. But what we would generally do is schedule the officers in such a way that it does not incur overtime. It could happen, but we make every effort to avoid that.
Isn't it a fact that in most police departments, the SROs work Monday through Friday? Work a five-day work week? Most police departments that have officers assigned to schools, that's their shift, Monday through Friday?
Quite probably, yes. But I can't really discuss other agencies, but I think that that sounds right.
Chief, how many officers are you actually requesting this year to fill in the gaps there? How many officers are you actually requesting?
Well, I had asked for...
I was a little bit all over here with the manual, that's why I'm just... Okay, I found it. I have the number. Okay. Ellen, just a quick thing. On the budget here, I see on... Don't mind me here. Obviously, Division number 240 says budget, salary and wage. I don't see... You have 2014 budget as adopted, and I saw the other ones where it said 2015, but that says 2015 up top here. Am I reading it wrong? If you could come over here.
Number... Little bit number?
Yeah, usually it's like what you had for 2014 and then for 2015. Am I reading...
Just that worksheet that's...
I think, yeah, that's what threw me off.
I think it's the worksheet.
Yes, see, I... Yeah. It's usually what was proposed and what you had the year before. You know what I'm saying? Because I don't see 2015. Where's 15? Oh, it's how you ran the columns. Okay.
Again, if I could...
Mayor, was this a trick question for us here?
I'm looking for the number you're talking about.
Am I right? Yeah, that's what I was looking for. I'm like, where'd it go?
I'm laughing. So, yeah, you picked it up. I picked it up an answer ago, and then Anna claimed it's the way the numbers flow in. You know, so...
See, Chief, they put you on the spot here. See, I didn't look at them like, what's going on with these numbers here? Okay. Thank you.
You should have announced that before. It doesn't matter. Good point. Good point.
Just looking at the individuals, I guess some of the titles have changed. Like, they have sergeants that are now lieutenants. I noticed a few.
Gentlemen, you can't shake your head if you feel bad.
Yes.
And Chief, how many cars are you actually going to be requesting this year? Before I get to the page, I'm looking.
It'd be in capital.
In capital? Yeah, it's capital. It's four.
Okay. And the SUVs, I see that you guys replaced with... How have they been holding up out there?
They seem to be working pretty well. Of course, they're better in the snow and so forth, and they're better for larger officers.
So, the officers, you know, rather have the SUVs over the cars? I mean, they look nice.
Yeah, I think so. And they seem to be more serviceable. Frankly, we haven't had them, you know, for several years, so I don't know how they'll ultimately...
And they're also cones if you need to be, and you have a lot more equipment that you could store there, too.
Yeah, they are very handy.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, moving on to Division 241. Chief, under... What's that? Object Code...
I beg your pardon. Five, not four.
Five, okay.
Under Object Code 264, it says computer equipment. We budgeted $12,600 last year. We spent $230,727.
What object code is that?
Object Code 264.
Okay, I see that now, okay.
We spent $218,000 more than we budgeted?
Yeah, that was the Aurora bill that was injected late in the year.
Okay. Chief, since we brought up a little bit of a sore topic there with that bill, how are we making out in regards to creating a new system in place? I know that was discussed with the mayor, and I know with Ellen.
Thank you. You mean the new CAD system?
Well, I don't know if you want... We'll talk about that later after he...
Yeah, because some of it's in capital.
And I know, and I know there's other people that have expertise.
Yes.
My concerns, we have a system in place that doesn't override itself now, like every so many days, the new system that we're going to have, or...
I think they do.
One of the things in deference to, you know, this is the chief's department, but I appreciate the fact that that is a specialty. That's something that we're all concerned about. So, when we get to that, we'll have your person address that.
Thank you, Chief.
This is very important.
Yes, it is.
Chief, under 411 armaments, let's see... You want to get new guns again?
Yes. This, as you recall, last year, new firearms were approved as part of the capital budget. But apparently, that request was an error, because it should have been put in the regular budget, the regular operating budget. Therefore, we were unable to purchase those firearms that you would authorize last year, and I've reintroduced them into the regular operating budget this year. But of course, the same issues that compelled us to ask for the firearms last year are not only still in effect, they're getting worse. I have a memo outlining the failures that we're starting to have on the springs in our firearms. And naturally, especially Counsel President Karifa, I know you're a firearms expert, you can appreciate the danger involved in having these firearms not working properly.
No, I definitely, I agree with you on that. My question is, we're asking for 120. Right now, we only have 94 guys. I know you definitely need to have extra in case some do break down. But even if we go to like, let's say we go up to 98 or 99 officers, do you think we need to have over 20 extra?
Well, it wouldn't actually be over 20, because we have the special officers, too. And we would have to...
Specials, yeah.
Right. We would have to arm them. So, there would be a few extras, you know, spare guns, but it wouldn't be 20. I think it would be more like about three to five.
How many specials do we have?
Eight at the moment, isn't it? Yeah, eight right now.
And Chief, with the old... I'm sorry.
Are they issued their own guns, or they... One gun, if there's two specials working at a time, and then the next time, there's two more, are they using the same gun, or they each have their own gun?
Traffic, the DB, places where we have older computers that need replacing, particularly in the Patrol Division. The computers in the Patrol Division are atrocious.
Okay. And one, speaking of the... You mentioned a CAD system. Now, I believe the fire departments are now going to be included in that, because I know I brought that up last year.
Yes, they will.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm excited about that. In fact...
It would still be done as a replacement. It would... I'm just saying, there's one missing off the official.
Really isn't that, but I mean, that's it. Thank you. But I, you know, it's one person. It should have gone through the whole...
Yeah.
Keith, I have a couple of questions for you.
Before you continue on, let's just make one thing clear, because I want to make this clear myself. We have two, and we're looking to hire two, but is that because of police officers that are retired?
Yes.
Okay, so that doesn't... You don't account for that, then? I mean, I want to make sure we all understand that doesn't account...
That would bring us back to 96.
To five.
We went up to 96, but I know...
Yes, that would bring us back to 96.
So, that'll bring us back to 96. So, if we want to get to 100, besides these two, we need four more.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, we need a total of six. Two that's owed?
Yeah, makes sense.
What are those on this page that Councilman Stanton was talking about, where there's five listed? Does that include these other two? Or are those two already accounted for somewhere else in here, and now these on page 13 are in addition? Because going back to what he said, if the other two are not included in this, then it would only be four. It would only be four people we would need to get to 100.
This is like an SAT-type test, you know?
Yes. Right. Counsel President's saying it, but the two that we're hiring for retiring, are they in the budget? Because that's important.
Yeah, I mean, we went up to 96.
Yeah, and then we lost two.
So, are the two that we lost, the two that we're picking up, they're getting us back to 96, so we're looking to add four more to get to 100. But on this page that Councilman Stanton said, where there's five listed, is that extra? Is that going to bring us to 101?
I'm always saying that everything's times by six.
Right. What Ann was saying, Ann, just speak to that issue, if you would. The one about... Use the microphone. Don't be afraid. Just let them know that in the explanatory... Speak up.
We were talking about six officers. Why it did not show up as six in salary and wage, I'm not sure. We have to check on that. It was six, and that's why it's carried through as six in the explanatory.
Okay.
Yeah, explanatory, you have six badges, so that's officers.
Yes, yes. And that, I mean, so that's where... That was our balance. You know, sometimes when you go over and go over, and we did go over these numbers quite often, I think for purposes of budget and knowing that, you know, we do have a number to cut, that, you know, a number to, you know, reduce the taxes, that at this point, we will not increase the budget by anything, because this budget should be able to, I would believe, absorb, you know, absorb that because of the fact that it's May. So, but I appreciate that, because these are the fine-tuning things, and it is expensive. It's an expense to move forward on that. We'll correct the numbers, but we're not going to increase anything, okay? I think that's the cleanest way to do it.
My next question. Do one officer replace with step four? Do you have someone in mind, or that's just for the process to look for a lateral?
That's... In case we have the ability to get somebody transferred from another agency, we want to have the flexibility to do that.
What, what Ann was saying, Ann, just, just speak to that issue if you would. The one about, use the microphone. Don't be afraid. Just let them know that in the explanatory, speak up.
We, we were talking about six officers. Why it did not show up as six in salary and wage, I'm not sure. We have to check on that. It was six, and that's why it's carried through as six in the explanatory.
Okay.
Yeah, explanatory, you have six badges, so that's officers.
Yes, yes, and that, I mean, so that's where, that's, that was our balance. Um, you know, sometimes when you go over and go over, and we did go over these numbers quite often. Um, I, I think, uh, for, for, for purposes of budget and knowing that, um, you know, we do have a number to cut, um, that, um, you know, a number to, uh, you know, reduce the taxes, uh, that at this point, um, we will, uh, not increase the budget by anything because this budget should be able to, I would, I would believe, absorb, you know, absorb that because of the fact that it's May. So, but I appreciate that because these are the fine, fine tuning things. And it, it is expensive, it's an expense to move forward on that. We'll correct the numbers, but we're not gonna increase anything, okay? I think that's the, that's the cleanest way to do it.
My next question, uh, can one officer replacement step four? Do you have someone in mind or that's just for the process to look for a lateral?
That's, in case we, we have the ability to get somebody transferred from another agency, we want to have the flexibility to do that.
Okay.
Have any police officers filed an intent to retire? Are we gonna take two steps forward once again?
None yet, none yet, but they, you know, they can, they can do it in two weeks. Um, there, there's no obligation to tell me that I'm planning...
So right now, you don't know of any, you don't anticipate any at this point in time?
There, there are several that are talking about it, but no, no one has, no one has put paperwork in.
But we did, we did agree last year that if somebody retired, that the, the department would be able to rehire somebody right away to get to that number. Cause their salaries are already included in the budget.
Which is the distinction between a, a replacement officer and a new hire.
They give you like a hundred thousand, literally, difference.
Yes.
The pay scale now. So that's good, so at least we're plugging our gaps. Now, I have to get back to the computer guy over there. Can you explain that? Cause I know, you know, last year you, you, um, requested a lot of, um, I guess, upgrades on your system. Did you get those upgrades that you requested?
We, we had a lot in capital for upgrades. Um, those upgrades are in progress now. Just to give a highlight of what we did.
Yeah, what are we, what are we looking to get?
The 911 system's been completely replaced.
Good, good.
Um, we're, we're on a vendor now that is, um, supporting us and is looking towards the future rather than a vendor that was stagnant. And, and their new product looked like their old product with a little bit of lipstick on it. So we are definitely moving in a forward direction. We replaced a number of PCs last year, um, but there are more things that we need to do to keep moving forward.
Okay, such as like the, I guess, the vendor that you have now for the new system that you changed over? What type of system is that? What's, what is it called? So the...
The vendor that we chose is Zetron.
Okay.
Um, they're a, a more aggressive, uh, much larger firm than the previous 911 package that we had. Uh, the previous 911 package, I think the company had a total of about five or 10 employees. Um, now we're dealing with a, with a, a group that has at least 10 or 15 people in their tech support department.
So you have service there in case...
We have service and, and background, and we have a, a good vendor behind us that did a great job at putting it in.
Good. And what's the life on those systems, those CAD systems that we're paying for?
Um, the 911 system, um, we probably got almost 10 years out of the old one.
Out of the old one.
Hopefully, by keeping up with things, um, this one will take us farther forward into the future.
Okay.
Um, it is built to handle the new 911 requirements that are being worked on. So that's, uh, it, it's a good thing to be on.
So we're being progressive, we have a vision as to where we want to go?
Absolutely.
Now, with our system in the past, I know we had some setbacks with how the system worked. How are we now with regards to handling data? Does it stay for weeks, months? Does it copy over itself? This, the hard drive, I guess, to the brain of the operation of the police department, where everything goes?
I, I think like Administrator Sammon said, we should hold that part of the discussion until we get to the capital budget where we're talking about the, the backup solution.
All right, I'm so impressed by your knowledge, I just want to keep it going now. But all right, yeah, cause I just, we all want to get educated on that as to where we need to be with the system. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Remember, you were my neighbor, so I'm not embarrassed to ask your questions.
We're very lucky to have him.
Well, he didn't work on my computer, so, you know, I'm a little disappointed.
Chief, a question regarding, uh, education. I see on page 17 of 17, we're expending about $403,000 in education. But I also see on page 1 of 2, uh, Object Code 300, education. I only see $52,007. What's the discrepancy in dollar amount?
What pages, what object code?
Page 17 of 17. Under Division 240. Combined total of $403,000, it's 163 and 240. And if you flip to the next page after that, page 1 of 2, on Division Code 241, it's Object Code 300, education. I only see $52,007.
Well, one's pay reimbursement for college.
So...
300.
So the payments that I see on page 17 are reimbursements for college. And I also see in-service education. What's the difference between in-service and a line item 300 of education?
300 is, uh, the contract. Their officers are reimbursed for their education, college. The in-service training are, is different training programs that officers go to as part of their in-service training along their career.
So these numbers should not be in, in balance? These are three...
They're two separate things.
They're two separate. Thank you, Councilman, Council President Karifa, that's, uh, correct.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to capital. Uh, page 3, right, 3 of 9?
Yes.
Correct, 3 of 9.
Okay, so the, the major part of the capital, um, would be the $152,000 in data protection and network upgrades. Um, we have had, um, a number of things that we have taken care of in response to the FBI audit with our data integrity, our communications integrity. We've added, um, new VPN connectivity to the cars, so they work better. Um, we've separated, um, some of our networking to make the majority of the police department network even, even more isolated than it was previously. Um, we've replaced our building wireless system with something that's more up to speed with modern security. Um, we've purchased software to manage our server logs, so we know when people connect to our servers and if anything were to go wrong with our servers. So those are some of the things that we've, we've done so far. Um, we've implemented a number of, uh, backup requirements that we can do within the equipment that we have. Um, we are all living under that, that budget cap, um, and, and replacing the equipment that we have, uh, just did not fit within a regular budget over the last year or so that I've been with the department. So that is why we're looking at it in capital now. The network itself, um, most people have a faster network in their house now than the police department has currently. Um, the network switch was installed when the building was new. I know that because I was there when it was installed. So the lifetime on that switch ended a number of years ago. Um, and that is what basically runs our entire system. The storage solutions that we have now are throttled by the speed and performance of that network switch along with the, um, the equipment that was there, uh, for me to try to work with. So we are working with EMC, which is a major vendor in the backup and recovery solution area, to try to get a onsite and offsite solution where we're backing up our data. We're not forced to roll over, um, a daily backup like we are now. We'll have a lot more storage and the ability to maintain weeks and months' worth of data and also to do, um, what's called, uh, let's see if I can explain it. Versioning on files. So if you make an adjustment to a file, um, I can go back and get you the version that was previously saved. So if you mess up a spreadsheet, I have the ability to go back and get the spreadsheet before you went and edited it. So it's, uh, it's got a lot of features. We're looking at backing up not only the server platforms, but there are a lot of PCs where people are storing local files. Those are not currently being backed up. Only what's stored on our servers is, is part of our daily backup procedure. So we're looking at backing up the entire environment regardless of where the data exists to make sure we have everything we possibly can.
Okay, I got a question for you. Obviously, you have the technical background. In regards to your data, I mean, obviously, you have so many emails and lookups, and I'm assuming everything goes to a centralized, uh, area, right? How long does that go back in time? That, you know, you just mentioned you could go back on files to look up certain things. So is it always gonna be stored or is it out in, um, the cloud somewhere? How, how does that all get stored? And how, how long will it be stored for?
Okay. Right now, um, all of the emails are stored basically indefinitely.
Okay.
Um, we haven't run into a storage issue with that solution yet. But as everything happens, sooner or later, you run out of room in the box to put data into. Um, so that, at that point, we'll start looking at where to back that data up.
So what's the life expectancy of this new system that you're...
We're, we're purposely...
We don't want to see your smiling face next year back in front of us for another quarter million dollars.
I'm purposely oversizing the system so that, you know, for, for the next five years, you don't have to see my smiling face asking for hard drive space.
I'm only being honest about it, okay? That's good.
Okay. We, we may need new servers in the future, but we won't need a new backup solution. Okay, that's, that solution will last us a number of years into the future because I'm sizing it to, to make sure we've got more than enough.
All right, good. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to animal control, uh, Division number 890.
Um, one of the things as the administrator and, uh, you know, working with, um, Chris, as you know, our animal control warden has been out, um, for quite some time. And I just want to, um, and I know Captain Carney, uh, works very closely, uh, with the ladies of that office. And, um, not to put words in his mouth, but I, I've worked with them. Uh, they've been very proactive and doing all due diligence and keeping, um, the most precious, outside of their children, their animals of the, of the people of Parsippany, well in hand. They've done a phenomenal job and have worked very well to put, keep that office together as well as working, um, with another community. So, uh, Captain Carney, if you would, would you just, uh, just talk to those ladies in particular?
They do a great job. They also work for Hanover. Uh, we get some money from Hanover for them to work over there. Uh, they get called in quite a bit, probably get called in on the weekend and all that, at least, uh, three or four times, uh, a week for extra overtime. Uh, they do a great job, and I never get complaints from the, uh, about the two ladies that work for us, about one. As far as their work performance, they do great. Don't know what else to say about them. They really do do a good job.
For the amount of work that they do for Hanover, what would you say percentage of their work is Hanover's?
Uh, that's hard to say. I'd say about maybe 5 to 10%.
Okay.
Hanover doesn't use it that much. They only get a small stipend for it, uh, but Hanover pays a substantial amount of money for the services.
Okay.
Cause there's a lot of storage, the cages and all that. We did last year have to replace a, uh, a roof that collapsed during the weather from the previous winter. So we took care of that. And then, uh, they have to replace a lot of cages. Uh, those things can be very expensive. One cage can be about a thousand dollars.
And one of the important things that we have to do is we have to keep the, um, the cats from the feral cats. And they've addressed that. So they've really, um, been very proactive, very caring, and, um, they, um, they're concerned about keeping the budget down, but also getting, getting the things. And they can shop around, and I, I suggest they, they want to get a discount on a discount for some of the cages to keep the feral cats away from, um, the...
You may not be able to answer the question, but do you know the number of adoptions last year?
No, I do not.
Ellen, can you get that for me, please? Thank you.
So we only have two animal control officers at this time?
Yes, Chris has been out.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions in reference to animal control? Any other questions?
You know, I, I'd like to make a comment about animal control, if I may. You may recall 10, 12 years ago, uh, the animal control shelter was in horrendous shape. It was, um, I won't be too graphic, but it wa, it was unacceptable, totally unacceptable. And I have to give, uh, Mr. Dickovics and his staff tremendous amount of credit because I periodically stop in just to see how things are going. And it's always neat and orderly, and the animals are obviously cared for well. And I'm very proud of that because it was not always like that.
Question on, uh, the past donation shortfall under, I guess, 675 for State of New Jersey. It's right under there. It doesn't have a line number. I know the Parsippany Animal Support Society is no longer in service, uh, but is that the shortfall due to the lack of donations that we're receiving for food and supplies? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And is there also any plans for, uh, a trap neuter release program for feral cats?
No.
No.
No, the, uh, that, that program is strongly advocated by some, but, uh, most, uh, most people agree that it is problematic on a lot of levels. Not the least of which is the, uh, spreading of, of disease. Uh, there was a serious, uh, outbreak of, uh, disease caused by feral animals out in Ohio last year. Um, we, we have no plans to introduce such a program.
Do we know how many feral cats we capture a year? Or dogs?
I can get you that information, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, they're, they're very good.
Okay, any other questions on animal control? Okay, moving on to Office of Emergency Management, Division number 330.
You know, again, uh, the Office of Emergency Management is, uh, is something I'm, I'm proud of. Uh, Mr. Hubner, uh, puts a great deal of time into that program assisting me in its administration. And he has, uh, really bumped up our CERT program, the Citizens Response Team program. Uh, we currently have 54, uh, active members, which is, uh, I think, a great tribute to this community that we have so many people that are willing to volunteer their time. And, uh, in early April, uh, we did a joint exercise with the, uh, Parsippany Rescue Recovery and several fire companies with, uh, where we, uh, had an exercise that simulated, uh, both a, a dive and at the same time, a search for missing juveniles. Uh, this was just a drill, but we actually had, uh, kids from the, uh, First Aid Squad that volunteered as the missing children. And, uh, it went exceedingly well. You may, uh, or may not be aware, during the course of that drill, within a 15-minute period, we had three actual emergencies. Two entrapments in, in motor vehicles and one serious accident right up the road where the EMS personnel were asking for assistance from R and R. So despite the fact that essentially, or nearly, all of the rescue and recovery people were dispatched to real emergencies and nearly all the EMS personnel were dispatched to real emergencies, we still were able to conduct that exercise effectively... real emergencies, we still were able to conduct that exercise effectively. We found the missing children. The dive, which is an inherently dangerous operation, went smoothly and I couldn't be more pleased or proud of our volunteers, the firefighters, the rescue recovery people, the CERT people. And it's very much to our collective credit as a community that we're able to field such dedicated volunteers.
Chief, I feel the same, that, you know, they're dedicated volunteers, you know, very pleased and proud of them as well. Why do I see no proposed increase for these two individuals here? If I've not seen anybody not get an increase throughout the entire book, aren't they entitled to a 2% increase as well?
I don't think anybody is entitled to anything.
They're doing such a terrific job, you know, they're very notable, as you just mentioned, you know.
Well...
For the principal's sake, we're going about $375 here.
I'd certainly be happy to give them a raise if you want to do it.
I think it's fair. They're doing a good job and they're leading volunteer efforts.
When it comes to sound increases, that would be the administration and we would be talking about that.
If you can please consider it. Thank you. Somebody's doing a great job, you know. They earned it.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing on the police department. Make a motion. Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, see no one come forward? Up. Just tap on it.
This one works.
Just looking over the police department's, you know, budget and stuff, the thing with the, I can't even think of what they call the object codes. There's a lot on there that, like for education, like you said, there was $33,000 put in, but they only used $12,000 last year. And now you're putting $52,000. I understand that, you know, you're thinking these guys are going, but if these guys don't use this, this is gone again, right? Goes into surplus and stays in the police department.
It would go into surplus, but here's the thing, it has to do with contractual. We have to be budgeted for the contractual that everybody who has an opportunity to go, to go. However, no, it does not go back into the police, it goes into the general surplus, fund balance next year if it's not utilized. So it never actually, you know, in a sense, gets wasted or gets misused.
Yeah, well, it's not that it gets wasted or misused, but it's money that necessarily didn't have to be put in.
It did because it was contractual. I like, you know, even with snow.
Oh, that was just an example. I'm saying there's other ones on there too, where there is amounts that were budgeted, amounts that were very low in what they used and then asking for more. So I'd suggest you look over it a little bit.
Fair enough, but that one was a contractual one. I will agree with what you said on others.
Yeah, you're getting four new SUVs again.
Five.
Five? Excuse me. We got four last year, right? If I'm not mistaken?
Six.
Six. Okay, I know the police love their SUVs. I know everybody loves SUVs. But, you know, can't we do something like half and half? Why do we have to have all SUVs? First of all, they're more, use more gas than everything else.
Just a quick answer in the winter alone.
In the winter, I understand. That's why I'm saying half and half. Can't you just...
Because then the other half are useless once it went to...
I mean, we've been doing this and driving in snow for so many goddamn years, guys. Come on. We've all survived. Okay, there's the request of six cops going along with that survey that was done that gave us an amount that you guys will use in last year, the number of police officers according to that survey that was done when they told us how many sergeants we should have, how many lieutenants, how many police we should have. You guys were going by that last year, so I'm asking you, should look into that for me.
We have an ordinance, Pat.
The steps of the police coming in, I understand Chief Phillips wants to bring in, possibly transfer from other places. And yeah, that would be great, but, you know, we'll be picking up everything for them later on. You know, I'd rather go with the step ones and step twos and get the guys that are in there experienced out on the street and get the new guys working underneath them. But it's just getting to be, you know, but check that number. I'm serious. That number was supposed to be lower than 103. Okay. Now the last one was just a fact that just recently in December, we used some police salary and wages and other things from the police department to pay a bill. My suggestion is, if we didn't need those salary and wages last year, take off the difference from this year. I mean, we cannot keep affording these type of mistakes and things that happen like this. It's just getting to be too much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. Valori. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we'll be taking a five-minute break before moving on to...
Make a motion to reconvene into open session?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we'll be moving on to the municipal court, Division Number 270.
For the record, council president, as we just spoke, I didn't ask Al to come out this evening. As you can see, the budget is pretty much static and standard and, in fact, the operating budget did go down. But we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Welcome. Welcome.
I was going to make a complaint about that machine.
Did you go for die and then go?
No, it was to take my money. All right.
270.
270?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know.
Ellen, just out of curiosity, the interpreters, how many languages do we have to be concerned about nowadays? Just out of curiosity.
14.
Really?
Not really. But I know, I know, quite a number. Because when I first come to a community, I do speak to all the department heads and there's variations on, you know, Chinese and also the Indian population, so even dialects. So it's quite a number. I can get you the exact, but...
That's all right.
But it's quite more than you would think. We're a very diverse community and that bodes well for us all. Thank you. I know you went for the trick question.
Thank you.
It's like a heartbeat.
I'm getting nervous for this.
Why are bank fees the new item?
Jan?
Oh, I get to sit at the big table. The bank fees are for credit card fees. They do take credit cards to pay tickets and stuff. And what happened was they used to waive those fees at the bank and they do not anymore. So we chose to put it in as a light on them. Part of the cost of doing business, I guess.
Is this a bank that we keep township money in?
I'm sorry, yes, actually, it wasn't. It was Bank of America and we just moved to Valley with that account because Bank of America was really overcharging the courts. So we moved it over to Valley just recently and they did reduce the fees. So that's actually a lower number than we expected.
Isn't there a bank that we have a lot of money in that we could say we don't want to charge?
That's exactly what Valley is, but it's credit cards and it's not normal. I mean, you could talk to that.
You gotta pay the credit card.
It's the merchants, yeah. Yeah.
Non-controllable thing.
Yeah. But we did do much better at Valley because that's where we have our money, yeah.
Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing on the municipal court.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Valori. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes.
Lake Kyle, Lake Shore Drive, Lake Kyle Wathen. I just ran it.
It's on. He's busting your chops.
Stop.
I just recently had a situation in my family where I went to pay at a institution to pay a fine and I was told nothing in advance. When I applied to use a credit card, I was told you can't use a credit card here. You can't use a credit card here. I want cash and I want an extra fee to go with it because it's after hours.
Lee, which bank, which court are you talking about?
I'm talking about 100 County Court.
Oh, okay, not here. Okay.
Not a court here. It's a situation that occurred to me in the middle of the night.
And going down for the count there.
Yeah.
I can't use a credit card to pay a fine. Not that I was being charged a fine, but I wanted to pay the fine, get somebody out of jail and I couldn't do it.
It wasn't the mayor.
They wanted cash. And guess who was sitting in the parking lot next to me? Bond salesman. He was ready to sell me a bond to get somebody out of jail. At the same time, he wanted to charge me $385 to boot. So when you say to go to court and you want to pay a fine, you better start telling these people, bring cash because we don't accept credit cards.
We do, right?
We do.
We do.
You better start telling the people to bring cash. We don't use credit cards.
Okay.
Because that's what this all drives it to. You gotta pay somebody to use a credit card and you're paying the extra fees for it, whether you're in this town or another community or wherever you are. It's not the same bank that you're dealing with where the home bank is. So throw away with credit cards. You won't have this problem.
Is there a way we can add that fee, the cost of that?
I was going to ask Ann that.
The cost of the fee for the charge that we're getting charged, if someone wants to pay by credit card, can we add that to what they're paying?
We'll look at that for the court. Is that on?
It's on.
I just want to know if I'm on. For the court, I don't know if it's an option. I'll have to look at that. We had no luck doing it. We have done it in other items, like we can do it in other fees.
Are court fees by ordinance?
I have to look at that.
If it's an ordinance, we just increase the fees in the ordinance.
You know, that's what we were talking about doing with other things, absorbing the fees within the ordinance and the fees. So we'll look at that.
Not absorbing the fee, but charging...
We should not absorb...
Right, why should we pay the $4,000?
Right.
I meant absorbing it into the fee itself.
Okay. Yeah, we could look at that because we could change that ordinance to include it.
That would be great.
Because every little bit helps.
It's 4,000.
They'll be taking care of her.
Yeah. Okay. All right, see no one else come forward on, entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the municipal court.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Peluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Here she comes.
As is it.
I didn't know if you were going to get up that time.
Ready for this? You ready? Good night.
That was good. She got you good, I know. Got me too.
Could you come state your name and address, please?
I think Laura was going to do something.
Can it be Cinco de Mayo?
Okay, see no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to end the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. This time, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Peluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.